The central part of that is still good to keep the whole. Remember this window.
Here with the neighbors who watch the third floor houses down, because everybody have their windows open. You can watch, you can listen to TV shows on third floor houses way. Play cards or whatever he's doing up here.
Hi, hi everybody.
We had party lines.
Oh, I've been there. I used to play cross picks in the house. Give me your hole, give me your hole.
All right, we have a quorum. We still got time.
We did not, no, we haven't, we haven't gone yet, but we go fourth of July.
Oh, good, pretty good.
Actually, I'm going. These are next Tuesday, go to work over. We got house.
Oh, nice.
We're actually in Vin Creek, which is also. Right there, so we're. Tea off on second hole. We're like two hundred. We only got the YouTube recording.
Yeah.
There's a drive early.
There's a drive early. So it's funny, because my, uh, we own, it's, it's a, it's a big house, we were half and half. And low, they don't agree. They live on first hole, two hundred yards from me. First hole.
Okay.
So their constant ball in the yard, so they would have the beach, it's like constant. Right?
So during middle.
Especially they live in the top, they have a house. I was about to show them, I, I love that Laura, everyone you got to wear that for the last.
Oh, good, I love it in that house, I, I love it. People can be kids at peace.
Okay.
And then every day that we were there, they had this little couple days, you know, because we throw, you know, big, yeah, camp all three days. And, um, it's like, well, we just.
Don't be so sure about that.
You know, when the music started, I'm like, you guys kind of like, that I wrote it, that. Pals, they're both in, living in Marina.
Yeah, we love it up there. The kids, but fourth of July, well, do like the, I said, the old town parade.
Uh huh.
We do like, they have fire trucks from all the town.
Yeah, I have it, I always. I didn't want to move your video.
Yeah, on the corner of, um. It's like, it's Peach Street, uh, Madison.
Madison is the main road, go all the way down Madison.
May under a family address.
The place called Denry.
It did give us that.
Yeah.
To make people.
Or.
Fire, probably just to do with their. Maybe we're gonna do.
I mean, I brought everything.
To, uh, come to a focus, write a name and address.
Yeah, I see Ms. Thomas is walking in now, and I think she's the last one we'll, we'll have with us.
So lower than usual. That's a lot, a lot of people.
Oh, we know that.
Question mark.
I see Ms. Thomas is walking in right now as well.
Enjoyable. We had such a good time. On this, so many of them, like, so fun.
How's Ms. Thomas? Did he have a baby?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five, New Kent County Planning Commission, uh, regular meeting. We will have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder, um, please do a roll call.
Ms. Townsend, Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Here.
Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Rose. Reverend Hathaway. Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder, we have a quorum. And approval of the minutes for the May nineteenth meeting, anyone have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have one, paragraph twelve, uh, my name has a capital R and it's, should be lowercase. That's all. Second paragraph and paragraph, in section twelve.
Okay. I have one correction as well, uh, number eleven, Chairman's report, um, June fourth instead of the fourteenth. That'd have been a pretty quick vacation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If there are no other additions, corrections, I move that we adopt the May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, Mr. Ryder, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye, the minutes are approved. Next, the citizen comment period, comments are limited to those on planning related issues that are not scheduled for a public hearing later on the agenda. I'm doubtful we have anybody signed up. All right, so we'll. No con, citizen comments, um, Mr. Silva, do we have any presentations? No presentations, unfinished business? None? New business? And now we're, we have, uh, six, uh, public hearings tonight, uh, all related to, um, AFDs. And I'm gonna pass the, uh, public hearing to our public hearing vice chair, Dr. Schmidt.
Um, the planning staff will give an overview of the application, the applicant may speak or give a presentation, then the commissioners can ask questions of the staff or the applicant, then we will open the citizens', um, comment period, you have to come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes. Our first public hearing tonight is AFD dash zero one dash two five, withdrawal from Warranee Swamp AFD.
All right, thank you very much, and. Testing, 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 all right, there we go, good evening, members of the Planning Commission, for the record, my name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division. Um, and as Dr. Schmidt said, the first item doct, uh, doctored for your consideration this evening is a request submitted by the applicants Howard W. Junior and Donna S. Brady to withdraw tax map parcel thirty seven dash four, a sixty seven point seven acre parcel located on Polish Town Road from the Warranee Swamp AFD. A copy of the application and supporting documentation is included in tonight's meeting packet. For some context, the Warranee Swamp AFD consists of nineteen parcels totaling approximately one thousand four hundred and seventeen point three seven acres, and is not currently set to expire until August thirty first, twenty twenty nine. In terms of location, AFD is in the east central part of the county, with most of the district's parcels lying to the west of, uh, State Route thirty. This particular parcel is located along the south side of Polish Town Road, approximately one third mile south of the intersection of Polish Town and New Kent Highway. The subject parcel is zoned A one agricultural and has traditionally been used in relation to forestry activities. Um, relating to the specific request, the landowners wish to wi, withdraw this parcel in order to execute a family subdivision and gift a seventeen point nine two acre piece of land on the northern portion of the existing parcel to their daughter, who will not continue to act, to actively use the land for forestry purposes. Section ninety one dash ten C of the county subdivision ordinance states that lands within an agricultural and forestal district as established under chapter sixty two must be withdrawn in full accord with established requirements prior to being subdivided. The applicants do have the white, right to withdraw the, uh, from the AFD program, and AFD Advisory Committee recommendation relating to the withdrawal request is required per New Kent County Code, section sixty two dash four four. Due to the request to withdraw from the Warranee Swamp AFD prior to its August twenty twenty nine expiration date, the applicant would be subject to rollback taxes on the land pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section fifty eight point one dash three two three seven. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the withdrawal request as we found no conflict with the county's future land use comprehensive plan, nor adverse impact to public safety associated with the proposed withdrawal. We also found that the withdraw, withdrawal would leave the applicant free to pursue their proposed family subdivision, and would not adversely impact the required AFD district core of no less than two hundred, uh, two hundred acres. In addition, at their April twenty first meeting, all members of the AFD Advisory Committee present at the meeting, uh, at their April twenty first meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. So that concludes my presentation on this specific item, but I'm available for any questions you may have.
If there are no questions, I turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt, uh, thanks, Ms. Silva, any further discussion, or any discussion from the commissioners? Yeah, before us return to me, we'll, I'll pass it back to Dr. Schmidt.
Is there anybody signed up to comment?
There is not.
So since no one signed up to comment, and no, any questions from the commissioners, I turn it back to you now, sir.
So, public hearing is now closed, and we'll, um, any discussion from the commissioners regarding this AFD withdrawal from Warren I Swamp? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Nebraska.
Um, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I moved to adopt resolution PC zero nine two five to forward the application, AFD oh two two five to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
AFD oh one.
I'm on, AFD, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I might have been on the wrong one.
Yeah, the first one.
I'm one, two, four.
Zero one dash two five.
So. With the amendment from Dr. Schmidt.
So for clarity, um, there's a motion to approve the withdrawal from the War, Warren I Swamp AFD, AFD zero one two five.
To the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nebraska, we do have a motion, um, to approve the withdrawal from, uh, the Warren I Swamp AFD, uh, Mr. Ryder, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
I abstain.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye, uh, motion carries, approving withdrawal from Warren I Swamp AFD, AFD zero one two five. Um, Dr. Schmidt, the next one.
Okay, we'll open up the next public hearing, um, AFD dash zero two dash two five, renewal of the Higgins Swamp AFD.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt, so the next three items you'll be hearing are all renewal requests of existing AFDs, um, as Dr. Schmidt said, um, the first one we're gonna discuss is a review of the Higgins Swamp AFD to consider whether or not it should be reviewed for an additional ten year period or un, until August thirty first, twenty thirty five. That's a little too far, alrighty, so a little bit of context about this specific district first. The Higgins Swamp AFD consists of ten parcels, so one of our smaller ones totaling approximately six hundred and eighty two point nine two acres, located in the western portion of the county, approximately one mile east of the county border shared with Henrico County. The district's core is located roughly one fifth mile north of New Kent Highway, with a small portion also located immediately, immediately southwest of the intersection of New Kent Highway and Hennpeck Road. The Higgins Swamp AFD is currently set to expire on August thirty first, twenty twenty five. All members of the district were contacted by the Planning Division and were informed of the district expiration date of August thirty first, twenty twenty five. In response, all current members indicated their desire to continue their membership in their, in the district and requested the renewal of the district, um, and, uh, worth noting as well that all parcels, uh, enrolled in this specific de, district are zoned A one agricultural. Um, the supporting response letters are included in your meeting packet, and all previously approved land uses continue to be reported annually to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. In conclusion of this specific request as well, staff is recommending renewal of the Higgins Swamp AFD for a period of ten years until August thirty first, twenty thirty five, as the district appears to comply with the requirements of state and county codes relating to the AFD program. The request also promotes land use patterns that are consistent with the current comprehensive plan, and therefore, staff is recommending renewal of the Higgins Swamp AFD in order to conserve and protect viable agricultural and forestal lands in the county. Uh, finally, at, at their April twenty first meeting, all members of the AFD Advisory Committee meeting present, uh, advisory committee present at said meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the renewal. Um, so that also concludes this renewal presentation, but I'm available for any questions you may have.
Mr. Silva, uh, what's the minimum number of parcels that are required for an AFD or a district?
It's a great question, it's not a minimum number of parcels, there's a minimum acreage that's associated with the need, uh, with the ability to create an AFD, so the minimum requirement would be two hundred contiguous acres, so that could be two hundred acres in one parcel, or a combination of parcels that, uh, in some total equal that two hundred acres. So, you know, this one is over three times what would be needed in order to constitute, uh, uh, an AFD core. So staff doesn't have any concerns about, you know, potential for withdrawal affecting its ability to continue with respect to the Higgins Swamp AFD.
And the adjacent parcels had to be within a certain distance of that, what you consider to be the core?
That's correct, yeah, if, um, if something is not directly contiguous, it must be located within a mile of another parcel in that same AFD district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Silva.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any rough idea of what percentage of our A one district lands are in the AFD currently?
I not only have a rough idea, I have a very specific number for you, so the, the total percentage of all A one zoned land that is in the AFD is actually, um, quite high, it's actually thirty eight point eight three percent of all A one zoned land, um, so it's not, not a number to really scoff at, it, it does constitute a significant portion of our A one zoned properties.
My second question is, through the review of the information you provided us, um, and what, what are the qualifications of an individual property owner on securing a renewal? And some of them provide, let me say, like receipts and things of that nature, some of them just, uh, a sign, notice that they would like to re, uh, renew into the AFD program, can you be a little more specific on what are the requirements for them to continue to be in the AFD?
Yeah, absolutely, so I think, um, you know, a big point of confusion with the AFD program is there's, there's kind of, uh, a few considerations to it, so we on the planning side of things, um, really deal with the administration component, and with respect to ensuring that, uh, parcels are, um, you know, we're confirming their desire to reenroll, we're basically contacting the property owner and asking them to confirm that that's what they wish to do. Um, a separate process is the process that the property owner follows up on with the Commissioner of Revenue's offi, uh, office to reaffirm that they qualify for the tax break, uh, component of the AFD program. Uh, something that a lot of folks don't know is that, uh, tax breaks are not the only benefit of being enrolled in an AFD, um, there are also benefits that prevent, uh, protect you from eminent domain and overly restrictive local and state ordinances relating to agriculture and forestal uses. Um, so the tax side is not the only part, uh, while it is the part that folks are most often interested in. Um, so to recertify the tax side of things, the Commissioner of Revenue's Office actually reaches out to these owners separately as well, and requests that they provide, um, current, uh, documentation of either a forest management plan, soil reports, agricultural reports, just to ensure that any land that is within the AFD, um, continues to be used for those purposes.
And those are the items that I'm most familiar, familiar with, is the forestry management plan, or the agricultural revenues that may be generated.
Yeah.
Or something like that, I just don't know if there were other criteria necessary for them to be preserved into that AFD.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a great question, so I guess the short answer is with, with respect to our considerations for the renewal, we're really just asking them to reaffirm whether they do want to continue or not. Um, to be candid, uh, one of the, you know, this is, uh, in a large part, a sort of steam release valve for people to get out of a district without having to pay the rollback taxes, should they want to. But again, to continue to qualify for the tax break component of things, they would need to certify all that with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. Yeah.
And also, Mr. Bennett, I'm, I'm a participant in the AFD program with, uh, my property, and I know, you know, I have to submit to the Commissioner of Revenue the, you know, proof that it is being farmed, which it also involves, so could involve USDA reports that the farmer has to, um, you know, provide, and so, it's somewhat seamless, actually, but.
Yeah. Glad to hear that.
A question along the lines of Mr. Bennett, so.
Yes, sir.
Several letters in here sign forester, you know, the forestry reports, and what, what are the credentials needed just to be able to provide that letter to support an AFD, are these, do they have to, these folks have to provide credentials, what makes you a forester?
That's a great question, you know, with respect to, uh, the state regulations and local regulations, there's not a sort of credential threshold set, typically what we'll see most often is that we, that folks will actually get reports from the Department of Forestry, um, I would say that's the vast majority of forest management reports that we'll receive. Um, the forestry, um, the Department of Forestry does have a list on their website of their, um, sort of, their list of thumbs up, um, of forest management experts that they would refer to people, people to as a third party to draft a report. Uh, that was not the case for the one addition item that we do have this year that concerns forest, uh, uh, forestry related parcels. So really, we're kind of looking, while there isn't a sort of credential threshold set, we're looking really in value, evaluating those forest management plans to make sure that they are including the requisite information to confirm that, should we want to follow up with that property owner to confirm that they're actually conducting Silva cultural practices in compliance with that plan, um, that we have enough detail in that plan by which to confirm, that being the case.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Silva, I have, I do have a question about it.
Yeah.
The, um, location is the western portion of the county.
Mm hmm.
One mile east of the border shared with Henrico, but that's completely in New Kent County, I'm assuming, and if it is ever in New, in Henrico County, does it still qualify for AFD program if it does border to, because since there's such significant pieces of land, what do we do when they're in between two counties?
That's a great question, and I'll, I'll be frank, um, I, I might need to do a little bit more research to give you a completely concrete answer, what I can say for sure is that a parcel could, in theory, straddle a municipal, uh, line, and be enrolled in an AFD district in each respective municipality, I don't believe, and this is what I'll need to double check on, that acreage from another municipality be can be used to meet requirements here, for a district here in New Kent, but a, a parcel could be in the AFD in New, uh, in two municipalities if it were to straddle a municipal line.
Thank you, but saying that it's a border shared with Henrico, it's, we know that it's, none of it is in Henrico.
For none of these parcels, no, yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? Anybody signed up to comment on this public hearing?
There is none.
Then I close this public hearing and turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Uh, any further, uh, discussion or comments regarding AFD zero two twenty five? Higgins Swamp. And if there are none, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
I would like to suggest a motion, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution PC dash zero nine dash two five to forward application AFD dash zero two dash two five to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, we have a motion to approve AFD zero two twenty five, renewal of the Higgins Swamp AFD, uh, Mr. Ryder, could you please poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
I abstain.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye, and motion carries, um, for the renewal of Higgins Swamp AFD, uh, now we have AFD zero three twenty five, renewal of the Putney Creek AFD, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Schmidt.
I now open up the third public hearing, it's AFD dash zero three dash two five, renewal of the Putney Creek AFD.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt, and so, as you mentioned, the third item doctored for consideration is a review of the Putney Creek AFD to consider whether or not it should be reviewed for an additional ten year period until August thirty first, twenty thirty five. For some context, the Putney Creek AFD consists of thirty three parcels totaling approximately three thousand three hundred and thirty nine point three four acres. It is also located in the western portion of the county, approximately one mile east of the county border shared, shared with Henrico County, locate, and, whoopsie, sorry. Yeah, sorry about that, a little typo in my notes there, located in the far northwestern corner of the county, immediately adjacent to the county's border, shared with both Hanover and King William Counties. The district's core is located immediately west of the Pawmonkey River and is bisected by Old Church Road, the Putney Creek AFD is currently set to expire on August thirty first, twenty twenty five. All miss, members of the district were also contacted by the Planning Division and were informed of the district's current expiration date of August thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um, all members, uh, responded, uh, indicating their desire to continue, uh, their enrollment in the district with the exception of one property owner, Ronald and Joanne Durr, who indicated their desire to not renew enrollment of their twenty four point five acre property located at fifty four oh seven Winter Wheat Lane, um, which has historically been used in relation to forestry activities. Um, they are wishing to, uh, let their enrollment in the AFD lapse so they can similarly execute a family subdivision for their daughter, who will also not continue using the land for forestry pur, uh, purposes, so kind of akin to that first withdrawal, uh, request we had heard. Um, all parcels currently enrolled in the district are zoned A one agricultural, and the comprehensive plan designates their future land uses as a mix of both rural lands as well as agriculture and forestal future land use designations. The supporting response letters from property owners in this district are included in your meeting packet, and all previously approved land uses continue to be recorded annually to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. In conclusion, staff is recommending renewal of the Putney Creek AFD excluding tax map parcel two dash one B, which is owned by the Durrers, for a period of ten years until August thirty first, twenty thirty five, as the district appears to comply with the requirements of state and county codes relating to AFD dis, uh, the AFD district program. The request also promotes land use patterns that are consistent with the current comprehensive plan, and therefore, staff recommends renewing the Putney Creek AFD to conserve and protect viable agriculture and forestal lands in the county. In addition, at their April twenty first meeting, all members of the AFD Advisory Committee present, present at said meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the renewal. This concludes, uh, this specific presentation, but I am available for any questions you might have about this renewal.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So, the one vote that we'll be making, potentially, will automatically remove the one. one parcel that desires not to continue with the AFD program, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And language to that effect is included in the resolution that the chair would sign.
Okay, so no other action will be required?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Did anybody sign up to comment?
They did not.
Okay, then I will now close this public hearing and turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. I'm just looking at the actual resolution itself to make sure that's reflecting what you were saying as far as it, so it's listed on the...
It should be, that 2-1B parcel should be in the table on that resolution, but the paragraph, maybe it's 2 before that or right before that, there should be some language that says with the exception of, and then we highlight that specific parcel.
Okay, I see, do see that. Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
It was correct in the resolution. Any further comments or discussion regarding this AFD 0325? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution PC-10-25 to forward the application AFD-03-25 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation. That includes the expiration of the one parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have a motion to approve AFD 0325 renewal of the Putney Creek AFD. Mr. Rider, could you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. LaRochelle? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Do you want to go?
Actually.
Okay. And Dr. Schmidt, you are aye?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And the motion carries with seven in favor and one abstention. All right. And next is AFD 0425 renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD, and turning it back over to Dr. Schmidt.
I will now open the fourth public hearing, AFD-04-25 renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt. And so the final renewal request that you all, or renewal consideration that you all will be looking at this evening is a review of the Pelham Swamp AFD to consider whether or not it should likewise be renewed for an additional 10-year period until August 31, 2025. Now, the Pelham Swamp AFD consists of 38 parcels totaling approximately 3,258.8 acres and is located in the central portion of the county, with the district's core being bounded to the north by New Kent Highway, to the east by North Courthouse Road, to the south by 64, and to the west by Vineyards Parkway. Additional land within the district is located immediately north across New Kent Highway as well as northeast of the intersection of New Kent and North Courthouse. The Higgins Swamp AFD is currently set to expire on August 31, 2025. Now, as was the case for the previous renewal considerations, all members of the district were contacted by the Planning Division and were informed of the district's expiration date of August 31, 2025. Now, all letters received from current members indicated their desire to continue their membership in the district and request renewal of the district. I would, however, like to highlight that for this specific district, there is one property owner who owns two properties that we have not been able to get in contact with yet. We are still working to do that and fully anticipate having responses from them prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting. But it is two parcels owned by Janet Dunham within this district, that's Tax Map 23-22 and 23-37. We have not yet been able to get in touch with her by phone or mail or otherwise, but we are, we are working to finalize that before the Board of Supervisors meeting. So just one, one thing I wanted to highlight for this specific request. So outside of that, like I said, all letters received indicated their desire to continue enrollment. All parcels currently enrolled in the district are also zoned A1 with the exception of three parcels, Tax Maps 23-70, 23-70A, and 23-70B, that are zoned EO economic opportunity. So I'll pause there for a moment to mention that being, you know, having a specific zoning designation is not a requirement of an AFD parcel. Really what the trigger is of threatening a parcel's AFD status is when the land use is there intensified. So if a EO parcel were to be used for agricultural purposes or forestry purposes, that would obviously not cause an issue with respect to its ability to be in an AFD. However, if it were to redevelop or the uses there were to intensify, that would threaten a property's AFD status. So I did want to quickly highlight that since that wasn't the case for any of the other districts. We do have a few examples of that in a few districts. I would really be surprised if it was more than 10 parcels or so throughout the county that aren't zoned A1 and are in an AFD. But since that is kind of an abnormal feature of this specific district, I did want to kind of highlight that. In any case, the supporting response letters are included in your meeting packet, and all previously approved land uses continue to be reported annually to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. So in conclusion, staff is recommending renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD for a period of 10 years until August 31, 2035, as the district appears to comply with the requirements of the state and county codes relating to AFD programs. And the continuation of the district promotes land use patterns that are consistent with the current comprehensive plan, and therefore, staff is recommending renewal of the district in order to protect viable agriculture and forestry lands. In addition, at the April 21 meeting of the AFD Advisory Committee, all members present at that meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the district's renewal. So that concludes my presentation on this specific one as well, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
May I, Chair? So, Mr. Silva, if the two individuals or the two people do not respond to you, what's the, are they automatically re-enrolled?
They would automatically be re-enrolled. Again, like I said, we fully anticipate having responses to that, from them prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting. But yes, if we were to not hear, the default would be to continue enrollment.
So, and Mr. Hefty's not here, so I guess for the technical aspect of it then with, and if they do withdraw, or not, not renew, not withdrawing, but if they do not renew, do, I guess, my signature on the, on the resolution would be not showing them listed, I guess? It's just a wait and see?
My understanding is that wouldn't interfere with our ability to draft ordinance language that reflects the non-continuation of those parcels in the district when the, when this specific renewal consideration would go to the board for their vote. So if you were to sign a resolution tonight recommending renewal for all parcels here and then they were to, after the fact, you know, indicate they did not wish to continue enrollment, my understanding is that would not present any sort of legal issue or conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No other questions?
Would you mention this two parcels again? It was 23-22?
23-22 and 23-39.
Mr. Silva, was both of those parcels the same property owner?
That's correct. It's Ms. Dunham in both cases.
And how do you reach out to each property owner? Is it just by mail?
The, the original default would be by mail. It has proven difficult to track down good contact information, especially for these parcels that were added some years ago. So we do, you know, kind of try to figure out if mail doesn't work, alternate ways of reaching out, try to figure out phone numbers, email, that sort of thing. Unfortunately, none of those have proved fruitful with respect to contacting Ms. Dunham for this specific, on this topic. But yes, you know, we would typically, as a first measure, reach out via, you know, physical mail, sent to the address, the owner address that they have listed for their respective properties.
Thank you very much. I might be able to help you with that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Silva, should those two properties not choose to continue in the AFD program, would it cause any disruption to the remaining properties whatsoever? Like being the core or something?
It would not. This is actually one of our larger districts, like I said, just over 3,000 acres. I believe the combined acreage of those two parcels is somewhere around 50 acres, so that would not threaten the required acreage in order to have a district continue.
Thank you.
No further questions? Did anybody sign up to comment on this public hearing?
They have not.
Since no one has signed up, then I close this public hearing and turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Any further discussion on AFD 0425, Pelham Swamp AFD? And if none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution PC-11-25 to forward application AFD-04-25 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have a motion to approve AFD 0425 renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD. Mr. Rider, could you please poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. So motion carries for AFD 0425 renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD. Next on the agenda, AFD 0525 addition to Holtz Creek AFD, and I'll pass it on to Dr. Schmidt.
I will open up our fifth public hearing tonight, AFD-05-25 addition to Holtz Creek AFD.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt. So this will be the first of two addition requests that we'll consider this evening. And so for this specific item, this addition request is being made by the Tidewater and Big Bend Foundation to add Tax Map Parcel 13-5A totaling approximately 23.2 acres to the Holtz Creek AFD. A copy of the application and supporting documentation is also included in tonight's meeting packet. For some specific context about this AFD, the Holtz Creek AFD currently consists of four parcels, so one of our smaller ones in terms of total parcels involved, totaling approximately 1,049.04 acres and is set to expire on August 31, 2029. The subject parcel at the center of this current addition request totals 23.2 acres with 16 and 1/2 acres devoted to pasture, 3 acres being marsh and wetlands, 3.6 acres being forested, and also has a home site, approximately a .2-acre home site at this site as well. It is zoned A1 agricultural and is designated by the county's comprehensive plan as having agricultural and forestry future land use designation. As evidenced by purchase and sales receipts provided by the applicant and confirmed via an inspection conducted by staff from the Virginia Cooperative Extension, the applicant actively maintains and uses the property in relation to cattle raising and grazing activities. So the applicant uses the land to graze and raise on average, an average of 35 belted galloway cows at any given time. One of them can be seen on the screen here, which are then sold to local purveyors as beef product. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the request to add this parcel to the Holtz Creek AFD. As the request appears to comply with the requirements of state and county codes regulating AFDs, it promotes land use patterns that are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff finds that by adding the subject property into the AFD program, we would, in effect, be conserving and protecting commercially viable agricultural and forestry lands in the county. In addition, at their April 21 meeting, all members of the AFD Advisory Committee present at their meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. So that concludes my presentation on this specific addition request, but again, happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Did anybody sign up to comment?
They did not.
Since no one signed up to comment, I will close this public hearing and turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. So any further discussion on AFD 0525 addition to Holtz Creek AFD? And if there are no further discussions, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt this resolution in order to protect, address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution PC-12-25 to forward application AFD-0525 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have a motion to approve AFD 0525 addition to the Holtz Creek AFD. Mr. Rider, could you please poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And motion carries for AFD 0525 addition to Holtz Creek AFD. And finally, we're at our last public hearing item, AFD 0725 additions to Pelham Swamp AFD, and Dr. Schmidt.
I will open up our sixth public hearing for tonight, AFD-07-25 additions to Pelham Swamp AFD.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schmidt. One quick point of note, some of you with a more keen eye may have observed that there's some numbering skipped with respect to the AFD case IDs here. That's because there was an additional addition request at one point, that would have been AFD 06, and the applicant in that specific request did end up withdrawing their request prior to the AFD hearing, just to highlight why that numbering is a little bit off. Once we've assigned a number, unfortunately, it can't be reassigned. But in any case, so the sixth and final item docketed for consideration this evening is a request made by TC and CH Evelyn Jr. to add Tax Map Parcels 22-61C, 22-58, 22-59, 11-39, and 22-52 totaling in sum approximately 284.22 acres to the Pelham Swamp AFD. A copy of the applications and supporting documentation are included in tonight's meeting packet as well. So for some context about that Pelham Swamp AFD first, the Pelham Swamp AFD currently consists of approximately 38 parcels totaling 3,258.8 acres and is set to expire on August 31, 2025. And as detailed earlier this evening, a renewal of the Pelham Swamp AFD until August 31, 2035 is being considered concurrently with this addition request. So for this specific addition request, there are five parcels highlighted in yellow on this image here at the center of the current addition request. So Tax Map 22-61C contains a total of 30.9 acres. Tax Map 22-58 contains a total of 4.87 acres. Tax Map 22-59 contains a total of 12.92 acres, and Tax Map 11-39 contains a total of 48.2 acres, with all acreage in the aforementioned properties devoted to forestry. Now, the largest parcel, Tax Map 22-52, contains a total of 187.33 acres, but is not proposed to be used in relation to forestry activities at this time. Instead, a six-acre pasture is currently used in relation to agricultural activities. So they are currently growing, I think I have a good image here, yeah, they are currently growing hay in that pasture that is then distributed to local farmers as cattle feed. So with respect to the zoning of all these parcels that are proposed to be added, they are all zoned A1 and are designated by the county's comprehensive plan as having a rural lands future land use designation, with approximately the northern third or so of Tax Map 22-52, which is that biggest one I mentioned, also being designated as agricultural and forestry. As evidenced by the applicant and confirmed via an inspection conducted by staff from the Virginia Cooperative Extension, the applicant actively maintains and uses the six-acre pasture located on Tax Map 22-52 in relation to hay-growing activities. The applicant uses the land to grow hay, which, like I said, is then sold to local farmers' feed. Now, the other four parcels, Tax Maps 22-61C, 22-58, 22-59, and 11-39 are not actively timbered currently, but the applicant is currently undergoing preparations for proceeding with doing so in accordance with the forest management plan provided with their application. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the request to add these parcels to the Pelham Swamp AFD, as the request appears to comply with the requirements of state and county codes regulating AFDs and promotes land use patterns that are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And staff also finds that by adding the subject properties into the AFD program, we would be conserving and protecting commercially viable agricultural and forestry lands in the county. And finally, in addition, at their April 21 meeting, all members of the AFD Advisory Committee present at said meeting voted... Committee present at said meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. So, that concludes my presentation on this final one as well, but again, as always, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Mr. Silva, I have a question.
Absolutely.
You said one of the parcels was, is devote, is going to be timbered. Does that include the acres devoted to timber? Just curious, that you said 96.89 total, does that include to be timbered or is that what has already been timbered already?
No, so that would be to be timbered, and so that's the summation of the acreages associated with all of the four parcels you see on the left-hand side of the screen here. The largest one, that almost 190-acre parcel, which the Forestry Management Report actually found has the potential to produce the highest quality hardwood, is not proposed to be timbered at this time. It's just that six-acre pasture that you can see a little bit better on this screen, kind of right in here, that would be used agriculturally at this time. Yeah.
May I, Chair? Mr. Silva, just to confirm, so it's the addition of these parcels and as well as the renewal of the district, is that correct?
So, we kind of have ordered the items, the ordering of the items in a specific way so that the renewal of the district would come first at the Board meeting, but they, yes, they would be considered concurrently but as separate requests. So, once that renewal has occurred, then these would be added to that renewed district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Did anybody sign up to comment?
They did not.
Nobody signed up to comment, so I will now close this public hearing and turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Any further discussion on AFD 0725 additions to Pelham Swamp AFD? And if there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution PC-13-25 to forward application AFD-07-25 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. We have a motion to approve AFD 0725 additions to Pelham Swamp AFD. Mr. Ryder, could you please poll the Commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. So, motion carries for approval of AFD 0725 additions to Pelham Swamp AFD. So, that concludes our public hearings for the night. Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Next on the agenda is Chairman's report, and pleased to report that the Board did approve the comp plan update at their last meeting, 5-0. So, I do know Ms. Rose and Mr. Bennett were present, I was unavailable to attend, otherwise I would have attended the, the meeting since we've certainly invested a lot of time and effort in the, in the project. So, appreciate, Mr. Bennett, Ms. Rose, I didn't know if any of the Commissioners were, were there or not. But again, thank, thanks to all for getting that through the system, including county staff. I know y'all have done an extreme amount of work to get this done, and finally, we've got it over the finish line and now we'll, we'll prep for zoning ordinance revisions or reviewing revisions, which will be maybe more of a task than what we've encountered to this point, so. But again, thanks to all for all their hard work and thanks to the, the Board for the Also, I have one other note. I would, just a, a moment of remembrance and for Roger Gregory IV. I don't know if any of you knew Mr. Gregory. He had previously served on the Planning Commission. I don't recall the dates. I know, I'm pretty sure he served with Ms. Townsend. I don't know if any, about any other, were you on the Board or the Commission? Anyway, so Mr. Gregory recently and suddenly passed away, so anyway, not only was he a planning commissioner for a number of years, I think he also was on the 2012 update, I believe, at that time. I'm not certain of his years of service for the county, but certainly appreciated his service. And I also knew Roger at a personal level. He was actually was a childhood friend. He was a lifelong New Kent resident. His family, the Gregory family is one of the oldest New Kent families in the Tonstall, Tonstall area and northwestern part of the county. Anyway, condolences to Mr. Gregory's family. And other than that, I have no further comments. Plan RBA report, since I don't think anything was passed on, at least not to me anyway, I don't think anybody else had gotten a report from Plan RBA. And we'll move on to Commissioner reports. With that, Mr. LaRochelle, do you have any?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Mrs. Johnson?
Not this time.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Not this time.
Dr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Continue on.
No. Mr. Moore?
That's what I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be like, just a couple things. The Board of Supervisors and the Economic Development Authority are taking a tour of the port on Wednesday, the Port of Virginia, down in Portsmouth, Norfolk. They are very, they, they have a lot of interest in us and we have a lot of interest in them. So, they are kind enough to be able to show us around and show what might be coming for us. With the update in the comp plan, to add to, to what Ms. Davis said, we accepted it 5-0 and also with a lot of thanks and appreciation for all the work that was done by the consultant, the steering committee, and the, and the staff. A lot of work went into that and we appreciate the final work, that's for sure. Housing committee met, and we got a few ideas on some workforce housing. We have some ideas on going to, you know, employers and talking to them too. We had a presentation from the Henrico Housing Development Authority, not authority, committee, and they're working on a number of things with some of their employers that might be of interest to us in the future. And one note that we probably won't have to come to the Planning Commission for, but there, there will be some announcements about possibly YMCA in the, in the New Kent history, New Kent future.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
With that, staff reports.
Nothing substantial from our end, I guess just a preview to next month. We do have one item that is up for consideration at the July meeting, so there will be a July meeting. It is just an exception request to the Commerce Corridor overlay zone regulations though, so stay tuned for more information on that one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Silva. Next meeting, Monday, July 21st at 6:30 here in the boardroom. And with nothing else to add, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We are adjourned.
I can make that motion.
You can make that motion. We'll accept your motion.
Stay private, everything else.
Yes, sir.